All right, so. All right, go ahead and I'll go ahead and start the meeting of the planning commission for September 22nd. Let's start with our roll call, Stephanie.
Thank you, Chair Lane.
Here.
Commissioner Lamb.
Here.
Commissioner Lerner.
Here.
Commissioner Naransik.
Here.
Commissioner Conse.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, great, and the next item is item number two, which is public comments, and the public comment section is for items that are not on the agenda, and we just have that to make sure that if anybody has something to say, that they want to bring your attention, that's an item that we have right up front of the meeting, so I don't see anybody raising their hand to speak on this, and Nick is the only one on that's not related to the commission or the support, so. Nick, if you don't have anything.
I'm not either, I'm the landscape architect for sixty-seven Redwood Way.
Okay, Kathy, and you don't, you don't have anything on item two either, right, public comments other than on the agenda?
I don't know, we got some, an email.
Yeah, yeah, this would be for things other than what's on the agenda.
Other, okay, I'm sorry.
That's right, all right, so I'll go ahead and open the public comment section and close it, because there's nothing on item two, and then we'll go to the approval of the minutes. I didn't see anything that needs to be changed. Anybody, Randy, you're on, you, do you have something to say on that?
I was saying, no, I'm good, I'll move if everybody's okay with it.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, moving second, roll call, please.
Thank you, Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Naransik.
Yes.
And Commissioner Conse.
Yes.
All right, good, then, then we'll go ahead and go for the public hearing site, the section, and I'll just describe how this process works. There are two items tonight, and on each item, what we'll do is we'll start with an overview from staff, and then the commissioners might have questions, the last of staff, then we'll open up the public comment section, and we'll go ahead and hear from the applicant or their representative, and then we'll close the public comment section and bring it back to the commission for discussion and actions appropriate, and then we'll go with the next item, we'll do the same thing. If anyone comes on the call later, I'll go through these instructions one more time, so everybody has the same procedure in their head. With that, then we'll start with item number four, A, the tree protection zone exception on fifty-seven Linda Vista Avenue, and we'll start with a, with a staff report, Stephanie, are you on this one?
I am, apologies, Chair Lane, and I think that might have been referencing last month's planning commission.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just.
You're thirty-three.
I was reading the minutes rather than my.
Hey, is this a step there, or what's going on here?
There's a heritage tree removal on two thirty-three Park Lane, I just glanced over at the, at the minutes rather than the agenda, sorry. So, item four, A, it's a heritage tree removal at two thirty-three Park Lane, and we'll go ahead with the staff report on that.
Thank you, Chair Lane, so good evening commissioners, tonight you're being asked to consider a heritage tree removal permit for one slightly less than fifty-two inch size valley oak heritage tree located at two thirty-three Park Lane. Would you mind, please, pulling up the photo from the arborist report on the screen? While Ralph's doing that, a brief description of the property itself, it is a corner lot that's located at Park Lane and Santiago Avenue. The property is currently under construction, as you can see from the photo, and if you had the opportunity to drive by, the valley oak tree requested for removal shown here on the screen is noted as tree number eighteen in the staff report and some middle materials. It's located along the Santiago Avenue property line towards the rear of the site. A little bit of history on this property, back in January of two thousand and nineteen, the planning commission approved the removal of three other heritage trees. These were deodor cedar trees at this property. Those three trees were located also along Santiago but towards the front of the property, so away from the subject tree you see here. At that time, tree number eighteen, the tree requested for removal tonight was slated to remain. So the primary basis of the current request for removal is due to the tree's declining health condition and the significant decay that it has exhibited as vetted by the project arborist. So the physical condition of this tree is noted to pose safety concerns should it fall, and subsequently potential damages both to private and public property as well as to any people in its proximity. I should back up and note that the location of this tree, as shown here in the photo, is located in the public right-of-way adjacent to the site. Another onsite heritage tree at this property did fail and fall on its own in general proximity to this tree earlier this year. That fact also has posed some additional safety concerns related to the current tree, given what has been exhibited at this property, as I mentioned earlier this year. So, the town arborist has visited the site, inspected the tree, and reviewed all of the application materials that were included as part of the agenda packet. She does concur with the conclusions and recommendations of the project arborist report, and notes that due to the tree's size and stature, it does pose a larger risk should it fail. The town arborist does find that the physical conditions of this tree combined with the replanting plan that is recommended to be revised from that currently proposed by the applicant, specifically, there is a staff recommendation that the replacement of a forty-eight inch size box tree currently proposed as a cedar be revised in species same size but to be of a native species, as well as that the situation and location of the replanting be pushed farther back from the edge of the roadway. And the combination of those factors are found to meet the town's adopted ordinance criteria to support its removal. And as such, staff is recommending approval of the application per the conditions as listed in attachment one, the draft heritage tree removal permit. I would like to note that staff did receive one item of public correspondence after the packet was distributed online. This has been distributed to the planning commissioners, however, I would, through acceptance by the chair, read this public comment into the public record, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, thank you.
Dear Planning Commission, we live at two Santiago Avenue across the street from two thirty-three Park Lane. Unfortunately, due to construction and clearing of the lot, only a few heritage trees remain at two thirty-three Park Lane. While we support taking down the beautiful valley oak in question due to its potential hazard, we are not in support of the cedar species at that location. Cars must be able to see around the tree trunk, or this would be a hazard for us getting in and out of our driveway. And we much prefer a native oak species to be planted and maintained at the site. A cedar would be a problematic tree for traffic visualization when cars are speeding from two lanes to one lane at the site. Since the valley oak now provides lovely canopy and beauty, we request that the largest tree possible be selected for replanting, thank you Wendy and Tom Hutton.
Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have, and I do see that their project representative here as well.
Yeah, I had a question on this, Stephanie, when I went and looked at the site, I was surprised, this, does this tree fall wholly into the applicant's property, or is it one of those trees that outgrew the property line? Because it's, it's like in the lane, as you come out of that street.
I believe the entire location of the truck is within the public right-of-way, but it's leaning towards closer towards the street.
So this, the road won't be widened there with this process then, huh?
Not with, not with this process, I mean, I can't guarantee that there would never be roadway work anytime in the future, which is the purposes of the public rights of way, but I certainly know that there are no immediate plans to road in the wide way here.
Okay, all right, any other questions, staff?
No, this, this is Randy, I used to live, Lisa and I, my wife and I used to live at two two four park, and we were right across the street, I always wondered what was going to happen with that tree, because it's a beautiful tree, but man, it's between the power lines on one side, and then getting around it, you'd be amazed at how much it chokes off stuff going on, and if there were ever an emergency, man, I don't know what happens with that, so. I'm, I, yeah, I feel terrible about the tree, it's beautiful, but it is definitely in the right of way.
I was, I was looking at my rearview mirror, my sideview mirror to make sure the rear, the rear fender didn't hit the tree as I drove by it.
Yeah.
It sticks out there.
Yeah.
All right, Perry, you had a question?
Yeah, I have a question, page two of the report, last paragraph, the issue about the replanting. So what's proposed is a new forty-eight inch Deodora cedar, and it seems like the neighbors would like to see another oak. So is there any reason, what, what's, what's the authority to designate the exact type of tree that should be replanted?
Per view of the commission, as there's an excess in making such a recommendation in order for the commission to feel that they can make their subsequent findings in order to support the tree's removal. And I would like to note that condition number two, which was drafted prior to receiving the public comment that I just read, does indeed reflect the recommendation of the town staff to replace, or I should say revise, the proposed species of a cedar with language that reads of native species, so it doesn't specify an oak tree necessarily. It left some discretion for the project applicant to work with the town arborist in determining what type of native tree species, however, if the commission felt that a replacement of an oak with an oak helped to make the ability to meet the findings in order to support the approval, it certainly is at the leisure of the commission to make that recommendation.
Sally, do you have, do you have any input on that?
It's my understanding that the applicant didn't want an oak tree species. And that's why they took Deodora, but I don't know exactly why they don't want an oak tree species.
Okay, all right, well, we'll maybe we'll find that out in the public comment section.
Yeah, I was just going to ask one question, given that picture. I assume they're putting something new on the other side of the power line, is that what they're doing, I mean, I, that, that would be the most logical, rather than replacing it right where it is, and I agree with that, that neighbor, that Deodora, I mean, if, unless the applicant really is upset about, you know, the, having a certain type of tree that they're, they preference, those become just such a mess out there. I, I can't even imagine that, that being anything anybody would want over there, unless they do, and if they do, that's fine.
Gabby, did you have a question or any, any questions at this point, then we'll have comment after the applicant?
Yeah, I think, I think I was kind of struggling with the same thing with respect to what kind of tree should be replaced between an oak and cedar. It seems like the, you know, the person that owns the lot would like a cedar possibly because it, you know, grows up instead of, you know, sideways like some of the oaks do. You know, and I'm kind of leaning towards what Stephanie was recommending, leaving it a little bit more open-ended, but probably going with what, with the property owner wants.
All right, let's hear from Nancy, if there's no question, and Gabby, thank you.
Yeah, I, I have to agree that a bushy tree like a cedar is probably not appropriate unless one moved it back off of the road a lot farther than this one is. Otherwise, I would go along with those that recommend an oak for that same reason, and I wonder if it shouldn't be moved over anyway, I can't imagine it being right at the edge of the street like that.
Yeah, all right, let's hear from the applicant before we start deciding which way we're going to go, so Nick, are you representing the applicant? Who's, all right, you see, take your, take your mute off, Nick. There you go.
Hello.
All right, good, and go ahead.
I'm Nick Godheart.
Go, go ahead and introduce yourself and give us the update, and by the way, I'm opening the public comment section at this point.
Sure, thank you all, I'm Nick Godheart, I'm the landscape architect for the project, and thank you all for the comments. We totally agree with the location of the proposed replacement tree, and we are, are, are very much willing and think it makes a lot of sense to, to locate the, the replacement tree further back from that edge, we certainly don't want to create any kind of visual impact for traffic. And then in terms of the, the species, you know, there are, as was mentioned kind of earlier in the, in the introduction, there were several kind of Deodora cedars that were used as replacement trees for this project earlier on, and so I think the intention from the client's perspective was to kind of create, you know, a little bit of continuity along this edge, and so that's sort of why we had chosen that species. Also, that species was selected because I had just recently gone out and sourced those trees and found some really great specimens, and so that's kind of why we, we landed on that species. I think we're, we're, we would be open to considering another native tree, and I'm confident we could, you know, find one that, that would meet everyone's criteria, but I think from the client's perspective, they would prefer to do the cedar or maybe another native species, not necessarily the oak for the, the reasons that someone previously outlined, you know, that it kind of grows, you know, in a leaning fashion, and they, I, I think that's just sort of that, not the character that they, you know, ideally would like in that location.
What, what would be other types of native trees that we would consider?
Well, we're also, we're using a lot of redwoods along this line on the inside of the property, so the, you know, the, the black tarp that you see there is, there will be a, a site wall there, and there's several significantly scaled trees on the inboard side of that wall, some redwoods. That would be something that we would be open to, sycamores, and, I, I don't know, I'd be happy to, to work with the town arborist, I'm sure we could, you know, find an alternate species if the, if the cedar is, is really kind of offensive, but it's something that we're using elsewhere, and so that's sort of the intention behind that selection.
All right, any other questions?
Not for me.
I would vote, I would vote for the redwood. How are you? But I do, one thing I can say about cedar trees is that they do fall, they are reusable, you can put them into hardware or things like that, that's one of the advantages of a cedar. But I think redwood is obviously more sturdy possibly in the long run for the property owner.
Okay.
Yeah. Redwoods suck a lot more.
And. Yeah. And I, I guess I, I, this is the first time I've done this process, so I hope this isn't a stupid question, but I, I, you know, I want to make sure that I confirm the species with the client and all of that, so how does that, how does that all work, do, would I?
Well, it depends on how we decide, make the decision, so what will happen is that as soon as you're done, if there's anybody else to talk to, we'll have them talk, and then we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll come back and talk, and we'll decide whether we go with the, the direction of the native species or specific type as part of the discussion, and then you, you and Sally would work through that, that would be the process.
Okay, great.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Nick, before I go to the next speaker?
Nope.
All right, any other questions for Nick before I go on?
Not for me.
All right, very good, then I'll, go ahead, is there anyone else here to speak on this item?
Nope, just me.
I'll take my meat tenderizer and.
There you go.
And move us on to the, and move us on for the discussion with the commission and action as appropriate. Randy?
You know what, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion on it, I don't know that, you know, i- if he's saying that the, it sounds like Nick's got a bunch of stuff that they still need to do, as long as the new tree's inside the, inside the fenced area, and Sally's cool with where it's put, and if we're talking about, you know, this, this, like I said, I lived across the street, I, I, I can't tell you how many times people hit that thing, let alone bear misses to it, and I'm sure safety-wise, it's absolutely worth doing, so happy to make the motion, or at least that, that I am where I am.
All right, Gabby, anything on this one, then, any other comments?
No, I, I agree, I think we can vote on this, I would support it, support the way it's written right now.
Perry?
I have no further questions.
All right, Nancy?
Yeah, I think I'm okay on that, we're all pretty much in agreement.
Yeah, I'm okay with the, with the, with the, the language in terms of the appropriate trees, I, I don't need, I don't need it to be specific, but I do need it to be considered where it's landing, because where it is right now is just not a safe place, and so pulling it back from that edge is important. And maybe even considering the idea of straightening it a little bit, so it's a little bit safer for everybody, even coming out of the driveway there. Because, yeah, is there going to be a driveway on that side, is that where the driveway is going to come out?
There is a, a service, sort of, a secondary kind of gate there, yes, but it's not the primary driveway, but yes.
Yeah, so we just want that to be as safe as possible. All right, Randy, you got a, you got a motion?
Happy to make it, yeah, move the planning commission find that proposed removal of one fifty-one point eight inch valley oak heritage tree, tree number eighteen at two thirty-three Park Lane, would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan for the reasons outlined in the staff report, and that the commission approved the tree removal subject to the conditions listed in the draft heritage tree removal certificate.
And that will not be a cedar, right, is that correct, Stephanie?
Yes, if the commission were to make the recommendation per the language as it is currently written, condition number two does read, prior to removal of the tree, the applicant shall submit a revised replanting plan, which shall reflect that the forty-eight inch replanting tree be of a native species, and that it be situated farther back from the existing roadway, and that all public right-of-way planting distance requirements shall be met to the satisfaction of the town arborist. So that would not include a cedar, as it is not a native species.
Great, all right, so Nick, you've got your, you can do your next steps then with Sally and, and get your project moving along.
Great, thank you all.
And just be continued just to communicate to the neighbors so they understand what's going to go on, and also, when the tree comes down, make sure you coordinate with them so they can get out when they need to get out, because that, that tree will get in the way of everybody.
Definitely.
All right.
Good idea if we voted on this thing.
Yeah, let's do that, Stephanie. Any roll call, please?
Chair Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Naransik?
Yes.
And Commissioner Conse.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, item four B is the special structures permit at sixty-seven Redwood Way, Atherton. We'll go through the same process on this, we'll start with the staff overview, and then, and then any questions from the commission, followed by opening up for public comment, and then we'll go back to the commission, close the public comment section, and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Stephanie, you want to hit this one too?
This will actually be presented by Ralph.
Oh, Ralph, all right, the debut, all right.
Get off the bat here, so. All right, thank you, Chair Lane, and good evening commissioners. So the project applicant at sixty-seven Redwood Way is requesting a special structure permit to allow for a swimming pool, the reduced front yard setback. This is pursuant to Atherton Municipal Code, section seventeen point four zero point zero five zero E. The subject site, which you can see here, is a seventeen thousand one hundred twelve square foot property located at sixty-seven Redwood Way in the R one B zoning district. It's surrounded on all sides by other low-density, single-family homes. As you can see here, the right property line angles in about halfway toward the back of the property, creating a narrower rear yard of the property. You can also see the shape reflected in the landscape plan here. This also shows the location of two heritage trees, one fifty-five inch oak and one twenty-eight inch oak, these are marked as T three and T four. Due to the location of these heritage trees, the guest house, and the narrow proportions of the rear yard, the applicant is proposing to locate the pool to the right of the main house, which would require a reduced front yard setback. The proposed pool would be located thirty-one feet from the front property line, which is one foot behind the required thirty-foot main front yard setback. Typically, the required front setback for accessory structures is a hundred and twenty feet or thirty feet behind the front line of the main residence. The pool otherwise complies with side and rear setback requirements. In two thousand and seventeen, the applicant applied for and was granted a special structures permit to allow for a pool in this location. That permit expired, however, before the applicant could begin construction on the pool. The applicant, excuse me, the applicant has also been approved for and is currently constructing a two-story main residence, which you can see here, a guest house and an outdoor kitchen. And for the main residence, this caused a significant delay, excuse me, significant delay in the project due to a material shortage. We received one comment from Monica Gentry, a neighbor at ninety-six Redwood Way, related to the length of this project, and Chair Lane, I'd like to read this into the public record.
All right, very good, go ahead.
She writes, dear Planning Commission, I am a current resident of ninety-six Redwood Way, we've been living with the construction of this project coming up for three years this December of two thousand and twenty-one. During this time, I've counted upwards of twenty-two workers' trucks at a time parked up and around our small street, including Barmeda Way, and most recently in front of my home and in my hedges. I've had to have two tires replaced because of three nails slash screws removed from my tires. It's my understanding that workers are required to park their vehicles in front of their own project, not anyone else's property, which has clearly not been the case here. While the construction noise and building is a constant in Atherton, the length of a project and its impact on current homeowners needs to be a consideration. The construction of a pool requires more heavy trucks, noise, et cetera, and nowhere does it state when the pool project is expected to begin or be finished. Furthermore, I think that we have been very tolerant as to the length of overall disturbance our street has incurred. Everyone has been impacted by COVID, however. To continue to use this as an excuse for a project lasting upwards of three years and beyond, while disregarding the impact on current residents is a problem. Regards, Monica Gentry. This comment was shared with the applicant, and they are prepared to offer response during the public comment period. Planning staff recommends that the planning commission conduct a public hearing and approve the structural, special structures permit based on these three findings. The proposed building or structure will not negatively impact neighboring properties with respect to privacy in view. The swimming pool is sufficiently set back from the residence of the neighboring property at one Barmeda Way. It will be located adjacent to the neighboring property's garden and entertainment spaces, adjoining similar uses. You can see that again in your, your yard at one Barmeda. Additional landscape screening and a new fence are proposed to mitigate views of the proposed structure from the public right of way, and those are evidence on the landscape plan. So that leaves zoomed up here, we see the fence, plantings in front, and additional screening wall for hanging plants. Secondly, the proposed building or structure complies with other development standards, restrictions, or limitations for the proposed building or structures, such as height and landscape screening. And third, the granting of the special structures permit is consistent with the objectives of the general plan and this title. The swimming pool complies with all other municipal code requirements with the issuance of a special structures permit. No heritage trees are proposed to be removed and/or impacted directly by the location of the pool. After the proposed landscaping improvements, the pool have minimal visible, excuse me, minimal visible impacts from the public right of way. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions from the commission, thank you very much.
The original approval was for, was, the original approval for the pool was on November seventh, two thousand and seventeen, is that correct, Ralph?
It wasn't November, I think I actually had it as April sometime, but.
It's a original approved permit, maybe that was the overall site, okay.
Yeah, that may have been after the, back the final site plan came in.
All right. All right, great, thank you, are any questions, Ralph?
Not for me.
All right, Gabby, anything on that one, any questions? All right, I'll go ahead and we are, we'll, we'll open up the public comment section, and we'll start, Kathy, I guess you're the person that was speaking on this one.
Good evening, I, I want to address the email that we got from the neighbor who lives at the end of Redwood Way, and I'm terribly sorry about the length of this project, there's a lot of factors that have caused the delay. You know, when the pandemic started, we had a two-month hiatus, then we have restrictions on the number of contractors on site. But before the pandemic, we also had redwood trees that are on the property to the south at fifty-five Redwood Way, and we had to wait for dormant season to do our excavation for that driveway, and this is per our project arborist from O'Clannahan. So I have a, a collection of six letters from the builder from suppliers showing, you know, that we just have to wait, materials are sitting on the ports, they're, they're delayed, so I'm, I know this has been frustrating for the neighbors. We've been working with a lot of neighbors, this is the first time we've heard a complaint, and we want the Monica Gentry to know that we are willing to reimburse her for any expense she incurred on any tire damage. We can stop by her place and, and reimburse her, so I'm sorry that that happened, we haven't had a problem with other neighbors. The parking is a real challenge, it's a small. With other neighbors, the parking is a real challenge, it's a small street, it's a dead end. We're no longer allowed to park contractors at city hall because of that construction at the train station there. So we will try our hardest to get all the parking in front of one bar metal way and sixty-seven Redwood Way. I think that addressed all of her concerns. The pool was approved in this location before, we ran out of the permit and didn't renew it. So we're just back asking, you know, for a renewed permit, we're ready to start the pool. Probably won't start digging until next spring because of the grading moratorium. But the project is moving along, the guest house and the driveway will be finished by this year, the main house by next February. So hopefully, we're getting to the end of this project, so if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So it's about another year, year and change before it's all done, year and a half?
No, no, next February, the, the main house will be done and we'll be ready to dig the pool. And just wrap up the landscaping, so less than a year. I think, you know, there's things beyond my control, but that's the plan.
And did you introduce yourself officially for the record, Kathy?
Kathy Strickland, landscape architect.
All right, thank you. All right, any questions?
None for me.
None for me, all right, I don't have questions, all the comments. Gabby, any questions?
Just real quick, Kathy, I didn't see the plan necessarily, but is this all level, level land in terms of the?
Yes, yes, it's a flat lot.
Lot, yes. And are they building a two-story house or a one-story house on that property?
It's a two-story main house.
All right, Barry, any questions?
No, thank you.
Nancy, any questions?
No, I have a comment when that's open, but I don't have any question.
All right, good, then I'll go ahead and close the public comment section, bring it back to the commission for discussion, actions appropriate, Nancy, you want to start with your comment?
Okay, yeah, I'm in sympathy with the neighbor who's been through a heck of a lot. And I'm also noting that this project was intended to have been done over a year ago, year and a half at least. Before we were contending with a drought and my feeling right now is that it's very irresponsible to prove, approve. A pool in the face of a drought where we're being asked to cut back fifteen percent on water. So to let them put in a pool and fill it with thousands of gallons, I can't go along with that at this time.
Right. Barry, Randy?
You know, that, that thought crossed my mind as well, because even when a pool is redone, you, you've got to drain the pool. And that's obviously a large waste of water, what is the size of the pool or the gallonage or length of the pool?
It's on the map, but it's, yeah, it's on the map that we're provided, but go ahead.
Ralph, do you have the dimensions of the swimming pool?
Looks like it's fifty-seven feet by around twelve feet wide. It's a, it's more of a lap pool than is a full pool. Yeah.
It's not.
It's not, it's not, it's not a full pool, it's a lap pool and it's with a spa embedded in it.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Requires a bunch of water.
Yeah.
But once you fill it up, you know, you're, you're okay.
Yeah.
Our property, we have kind of an old fashioned large pool, we haven't had to change the water on that. But this just seems like it's pretty streamlined for that particular property.
Randy, did you have a comment, I thought you were gonna say something?
I, yeah, I was, I was just gonna say that I, I'm with Nancy on it in terms of the water, you know, at this point, but I don't know from a, from a. Functional standpoint, be given that, that by code, you know, the people have pools all over Atherton. And, you know, landscape and all this other stuff, I think whoever was speaking earlier about, about filling the pool and going from there. And I, we, same thing, any one of our pools, we've never had to drain it, it's that initial one Nancy, so I'm, I'm sensitive to the water use too. But I don't, I don't think that's in, in this purview of the planning commission, I don't know that we can jump in and, and say, hey, by the way, you're using a bunch of water. That should be used elsewhere. But I'm fine, I'm fine with it, but I, I'm appreciative of what Nancy's comment was.
Right, Perry, anything on this one?
Nothing further, thank you.
Yeah, I, I, it's the, the plan, the, the plan, I understand it was approved, it's always struck me as, as about ten pounds on an eight-pound bag on the lot. You know, it just, it's pretty, it's pretty, a lot, a lot of stuff going on there and that side is going to be a little tight to have parties on without. Without stepping in the pool, but you know, that I'm not going to be attending the party anyway, so I guess I don't have to worry about it. But, yeah, the, the other thing I would say to the applicant, Kathy, maybe you can pass it on to them. Is when they put a pool in and all the gunite goes on and all that other stuff, it can create a lot of dust. And I know that we recently had this, so I've had a very similar thing, I've got a three-year construction site going on right next door to me. And they put a bunch of concrete in, they had to modify it and the dust went over and it filled up our pool filter so much that we had to spend eight hundred bucks to get a new filter. So it's important that they, they concentrate on keeping the dust down and doing the things it does to not irritate the, the neighborhood even more. And not the least of which is coordinating with subcontractors. I know on our site, for example, the contractor knows what's going on sometimes, but then they, they, you know, they're offsite. And then subcontractors come in and they, they don't always work in Atherton, so they don't know the rules. Several times, they started it at seven, seven o'clock in the morning, eight o'clock is start time. So there's a whole range of things that we just got to make sure that people who are subcontracted with actually understand the real program. And everybody assumes they do, but they need to be told by the contractor, particularly when there's a lot, an applicant, when there's an application where there's been some controversy about. The impact on neighbors, so I, I just would tell you to take the message back to upgrade their connection with neighbors. And be more sensitive to the outcome for the neighborhood, particularly in this last year of the, of the development. Because it is a long time to have construction going on right next to area.
I know, agreed, okay, noted.
All right, is there, are we, any other comments, are we ready for a motion?
No, I just want to reiterate that this is not a now or never project. And the timing could be fine next spring if this turns out to be a wet winter, I just think it's irresponsible to go ahead with it at this time.
Yeah.
That's all.
I just know, don't know if we have the purview to stop it on that basis, that's the issue, Nancy, it's not a matter, it's.
Wow, that sounds pretty important.
Yeah, I know, but.
Water usage is a.
It's a water issue, but not a planning issue.
Okay.
All right.
It might be a rainy season.
Yeah, good, we'll hope it is.
Our pool fills up with water, it's a rainy season. I think it's a one-time deal.
Ready for a motion if we have one?
I'll make the motion, although I, I definitely appreciate Nancy's view on this.
Yeah, I do too.
Nonetheless, I, I, I think that, I think a motion is appropriate. So I move that the planning commission approve the special structures permit to allow for a swimming pool. To have a reduced front yard setback at sixty-seven Redwood Way, based on the findings listed in the staff report. And subject to the conditions listed in the draft special structures permit.
All right, Randy, second.
Go ahead, no, you go ahead, boss.
No, I, I just want to, I was just calling for a second, so you, you got it, Randy's, Randy's second. All right, I can have a roll call, please, Stephanie?
Caroline?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner?
No.
Commissioner Narancic?
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Conse.
Yeah.
All right, very good, thank you, and Kathy, do whatever you can to take the message back. That, that needs, it needs to be an upgrade in terms of the way it's handled, okay?
Will do.
All right, thank you, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, item number five, staff report, anything going on?
I'm just a little update on the new town center. I went over there two weeks ago, it's coming along quite well, they're just installing all the furniture. In terms of when the staff is moving over, this is targeted for the end of October. And I mentioned that because there is possibility that sometime before the end of the year, we may be meeting in person in the council chambers. I can't guarantee, but.
Wow. You go, girl.
We'll hope so.
Great.
I'm about to buy new clothes and everything, yeah.
You just need to get a haircut.
Yeah, that's true.
You cannot look like the boyfriend anymore.
That's right, that's right. So what else, Stephanie, anything else on that?
Ah, nothing, I, I don't know if any of the commissioners are following, but Senate Bill nine is, looks like it is indeed coming down the pipeline. That would, uh, will be an interesting process. For Atherton, I, for those who don't know what it is, I'm not going to get into it too much, still learning it myself. But it is legislation that would allow property owners to have two units on a parcel zone for single family housing, effectively creating. A duplex that could split a residential parcel into two pieces regardless of what the local jurisdiction's minimum land use data or regulations may be. So basically, you have right now, every single family lot is allowed one main residence. As well as one accessory dwelling unit and one junior accessory dwelling unit. And so, well, depending on how this works itself out, it could create a hypothetical where that one lot then is split in two. So you just doubled your amount of housing that you have. Under current regulations.
Yeah.
Yes, we're proposing this.
It was Atkins, I think it is, Senator Atkins?
I thought it was Scott Weiner.
Weiner, sorry, Atkins is.
Yeah, it's okay, that's all right, Weiner's been the one that has done this and there was three of them, there was eight, nine and ten. I, Stephanie, I didn't see what, what, whether eight and nine, I know nine did, but I thought eight and nine got it and I don't know about ten.
About ten, I know, we're just focusing on this one and I think what we'll likely do is you'll, you will be seeing come down, coming down the pipeline in twenty twenty-two. We are, it's running parallel to the required housing element update, so presumably this issue will be somehow integrated. And evaluated and discussed as part of that process. I don't, I can't tell you how or what or what it's going to look like, but we will have the need to discuss it.
He had quite, yeah, he had quite a issue here, my husband has a, a home here in San Francisco. And he, Scott Weiner was also trying to build high rises and Pacific Heights and blocking people's views. So he does have kind of, he likes to get his hands in a lot of different areas that have maybe historic preservation. You know, obviously, the, you know, legislation, but wouldn't this be against our town charter to have? The whole point of Atherton was to have only one house on one lot. I, I haven't heard of this before.
Yeah, this is the thing, this is the thing, it's gonna override local regulations.
Yeah, that's the whole point of it.
Yeah, and that's the real problem with it.
Yeah, it is, there's gotta be some way we can stop this, in my opinion, as an attorney, you've got to maybe work with our legal counsel in Atherton. Because this seems like it would dilute some of our investment in our homes, that people are building to the, the, you know, like our example. We have about acre and a half, a little under acre and a half, if I were to build two homes on my property, yeah, sure, I can, you know, if I'm a developer. I can walk away and make a, you know, a penny, but that does create more crowding with my neighbors and it kind of ruins the look of the neighborhood, I would say. But.
Yeah, we've been talking about this for the last year, year or two, actually, that we knew, you knew it was coming. And it's one of those things where definitely, there's been a lot of effort already to head this off. And none of it's, none of it's worked, as a matter of fact, I've even, I've even, when the governor's campaign was coming to me. I was making a point about this, this is kind of a thing that I just flat out didn't agree with about the, the approach to development, to it's. Under the auspices of increasing housing and lower the cost of housing, but it actually increases the cost of housing, I believe.
Yeah, well, we stopped him in San Francisco, I have to say, because that was getting out of control.
The key difference between San Francisco and here is the, the lower cost housing numbers that we don't get as a community. And San Francisco hits it, but we don't, and so we're, we're a target for this type of thing. Communities like ours are targets for it because we have a very special setup in terms of being unique. We don't have multiple fam, multi-family, things like that.
Yeah, but am I missing something, he's a supervisor in San Francisco, why would he have jurisdiction over Atherton and San Mateo?
Oh, this is state, it's a state bill.
He's not, he's not a supervisor anymore. Yeah, it's a. Yeah, it's a state, no, 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 this thing's done, I mean, there's no, I, I doubt even there's an appeal period. It was, it's from the standpoint of what they're doing, it's, the, the train is going and, and I mean, having been in. In development for many, many years, I would tell you that in most communities. There's a lot of opposition to it, but the, a, a big reason of why the state doesn't provide enough housing. Is because elected officials that are in state government or city government, county government, get so much pressure from advocates. And neighbors and all this, that big projects that might or might not be the right project at the time end up getting rejected. And so the governor chose this path with eight, nine and ten and it was sponsored by these other folks like Scott. And so that's how this thing came about and most cities are way under their allotted amount of, of housing there to provide. Ours is very unique because we have so many larger parcels, think of people that are on four, five, six, seven, eight thousand, you know, foot parcels in cities. That, I, it's, it's a really big problem, so anyway, just, just so you know, this is, this has been bantered about for many, many years. And, and both of your comments are well taken because it's, it's, it's a big, it's a big issue in the state as we all know.
Yeah, and it'll put, it'll put pressure on our, our, our street and the structure and parking situation. Just like, I've talked about it several times before, but you got into LA and it, and there's no more garages anymore because everybody turned them into a do, a do. And then there's six cars in the driveway and twelve, twelve on the street.
Street, yeah.
And you, you look at the Google map of, of LA down in, uh, down in Laguna Beach or places like that. And just, it's just a cluttered mess.
Yeah.
And that's because you, you, if you do planning from scratch, you do it one way, if you do infill planning, it starts breaking that down. Yeah, all right, item number six, is that it, Stephanie, is that it?
I do not have anything else to report.
The only thing, there's another thing, just to, just to make sure everybody remembers, we have three months left in the year after this month. There was only two meetings, though, so there's a meeting in October and then one in the first week of December, is that correct, Stephanie?
That's correct, no meeting in November.
Right, so just for those, for Gabby, just because that's, you're new to it and it'll just, the good news is there's only two meetings. The bad news is that your calendar is set up for about the same time every month, you'll be here and nobody else will be here, so just double, double click on the date.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But, 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 but that's one thing you should probably, being the chair of this committee and being the, the resident. Let's see, the, the boss, but also the one who comes in costume, are we all coming in costume?
Hey, I don't come in costume, I just come in, I just come in. Our, our, sort of a highlight type, you know, what would you say, OT?
Come on, come on, big man, step up, we need to see something really big this year for Halloween.
Comment, we'll talk about it next month because that, because you've got it set up for December.
About it, it is next month, that's.
Oh, oh, Halloween, Halloween. Yeah, I might have a costume for Halloween, I might have a funky sweater for, for December.
And are we seeing Elvis this time or who, or who are we seeing?
You know, I haven't decided yet, Batman might show up, I'm not sure.
All right, okay.
All right, so, all right, so are any commissioner reports?
None for me.
I don't have anything either, just want to make sure we get the meetings right. All right, good, so we're almost at the end of the year and then we'll start with the new fresh year. And then I'll be on for the last six months of my ten-year term and I'll get out here right before number nine gets, takes full traction. And I'll just, I'll watch the meetings from there on, it, it should be entertaining, much more entertaining than being on our commissions.
The meat, you're gonna have to pass along to whoever becomes the chair, you're gonna have to pass along that meat cleaver that's supposedly acting as a gavel.
I don't think my wife will let me part with it.
Well, we might have to rep, we might replicate that for her, so if you can just send us a couple of pictures, we'll figure it out.
All right, yeah, so we'll, you know, I might bring you to our first live meeting.
Oh, oh, we're looking forward to it.
I think that meat cleaver would look really good on you.
I know, and you know what, I have been pushing so far, Tonelli, Tonelli walked away from what he should. Walked away from what he should be, which is the next chair of this committee, so. I, I, we might have to, we might have to have a, like a, choose sticks the next time or, or short straws or whatever it is, so.
How long, I've been a chair for a while, haven't I, like five years, six years, something like that?
You are, you're getting long in the tooth, I will say.
I know, yeah, I know.
I want to say it was twenty sixteen.
Yeah, five years, I think, yeah. Yeah. All right, well, uh, let, let's, uh, let's go ahead with that ever difficult item number.
I moved, I moved.
Gabby, do you want to?
Gabby, do it, sorry.
Yeah, I just, but. I'd just say one more thing, I just want to say, is there anyone that is, um. Chairman, you said you had talked with Governor Newsom, I mean, is there anyone that we can appeal to? Cause just from personal experience with Governor Newsom, you know, his wife has done fundraising and opportunists. One of my, you know, friends' homes and so forth, I mean, does, does he sort of not get what the value of our, of our neighborhood is? I mean, what, I mean, what's the goal, the end goal, is it for developers to become more profitable in Atherton?
No, 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 it has nothing to do with that, it's, it's a political issue of. How do we get more housing where local government can't stand in the way of doing it, that's exactly what it is, it's just how does. How does it add to the housing, well, you're welcome to, and called there, but, but he was. He, you gotta remember how many communities there are with. Forty million of us around the, the state that. Were, were woefully short on housing, that's really what it is, so anyway.
Yeah, I mean, what this is, yeah, yeah, this is the, you're, you're getting involved with this at the end of this process, we've been pushing back on it for a while in a lot of. And, uh, and this, you know, is, the other thing about this is, you know, people in LA or other places are sitting there going, what's the big deal? You guys got five acres, you can't deal with, you can't deal with that, so, so if you look at the population and the typical, uh, lot size, we, we come from this. A place where people are looking at us like, oh, really? That's a problem for you, so it's, it, it's, there's been a lot of stuff going on about it. Anyway, we need a motion. Gabby, we need a motion.
I own property in Los Angeles, I can totally see that point of view, but subdividing our own lots. Um, I think changes the character of, of the neighborhood. And obviously is more of a drain on the resources and so forth, so.
I'm with you. If you can figure out a way to stop this train, I've been trying to work on it for a lot of different angles and many people in the town have, and, and on not only our town, Woodside and. All these other towns that are in, in larger lot situations where if it just changed the basic character of the community. Um, it's, it's been, I've been, I've been to regional meetings where. Uh, where I'm the only one saying this, everybody else is going like, hey, we gotta get more housing, let's go for more density. Let's go for, you know, more, more condos on El Camino, because I'm sure nobody will be. Able to drive there anyway, so they'll use the public transit, so it's, there's a lot of sort of like group think on this that isn't working in my opinion.
Yeah, the, the only thing I'm seeing on, on my personal street and stock bridges at the house, the house next door that was built and the house across from me. Um, they're both, I think, ten to twelve thousand square feet, so they're, they're taking up the entire lot. Um, I come from one of the old homes, which is with the original Atherton home, so it's a smaller and a big lot. But, um, I think people are just building the entire lot, so I, I don't really see this working in the future, but possibly there's some smaller lots in Atherton where they could subdivide them. Yeah, I'm sort of late to the game on this, I hadn't heard about the legislation on this, I appreciate the update and keeping me apprised of that.
Yeah, yeah, well, we'll know, we'll know more soon, or, or we'll get briefed on it as it comes through, but. We've had a couple of briefings on what was coming a couple of different times. Anxiety impacted on the ADU, uh, on the ADU impact because that was a forced direction too. So, um, you know, it's, it's been creeping along for the last probably three or four years, right, Stephanie? That's.
Yeah, there was the other bill, um, Commissioner Lam, if you remember, I, Weiner had also proposed it, but it died. Um. Right before the.
SB fifty.
Fifty, yeah, sorry, I'm.
Yep.
Kind of breathless off, so yeah, I mean, there's certainly been a, a, a series of potential legislation for at least. You know, the last, as Tralane said, five, six years ago, um.
Yeah.
Most recent being that in twenty twenty that required all. Local jurisdictions basically to lift up, um, all restrictions related to the construction of accessory dwelling units, so taking out any kind of discretionary review and. Effectively allowing them by right for the most part, as well as removing local control over, you know, associated development regulations.
Yeah.
Eric, unfortunately, I have to.
Yeah, I, I, I just need a motion to adjourn of a train.
I moved to adjourn.
Second, I second.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Naronse?
Yes.
And Commissioner Constante?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good meeting. Good night, all.
Night, everybody.
Bye bye.
See everyone.
Thanks, Ralph, talk to you next time.
Have a good night.